I'm just checking, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay. So, hearing that.
We're chatting.
No, no, that's fine. Let it be known that we are recording everything tonight. So. I don't see Jeremiah is not here, so Bruce?
Yes.
Fifteen minutes?
That's it.
Please.
Not even.
Please come on up. I was, I was waiting, we were, if one other member was coming, I was gonna do a tri-party first, so, but you got, we're gonna, we were gonna go with you first.
Okay, awesome.
So, which is fun.
I've got a hearing problem, so if you, Mike, can I stand up close to the front and I can hear you and you can hear me?
Of course you can.
Absolutely. What's going on so far?
You forget now, I have, I have electronic hearing, so I understand.
Well, you certainly know Bruce Wheeler, I'm Brad Latham, and first of all, I appreciate the CPC for its support in going through the senior housing rezoning place about a year and a half ago, and Danielle also helped us in that process. I also appreciate your willingness to see us on such short notice. This deals with property 146, 148, and 150 Park Street that is subject to the senior housing overlay. Just to show the scale of this, I have, I've only got one copy of this, I'm sorry, but to show, I marked in dark color the three lots that are included in this particular property for the senior housing overlay district. I do that because there's so much of this problem behind, that's not being touched, I want to put that in public perspective. We also have at this point, a site planting plan, and this again is a work in progress, but I'd like to use this for reference purposes if I could, as I go through the discussion tonight. And we're here because we are hopefully going to be filing with you within the next ten days to two weeks. I know it's been a while since the rezoning took place, but there was a lot to cover, a lot to go over. And so this shows just the portion closest to Park Street on this map. The land mass, of course, continues on some distance to the low right-hand corner. On the orientation of this, north is the top, and Park Street is really to the west of the site. I'm gonna kind of, if I can, walk around it and describe what's taking place by way of refinements. The basic concept is the same as was presented at the town meeting, and to you folks during the hearing process. There is, of course, an historic home on the front of the property. That's being more slightly, and the relocation is slightly different from what it was before. It's being the same distance as it's historically been from Park Street, but it's shifting northerly. And that's done for a couple of reasons. First, it's putting it on a new foundation that will preserve the life of this. It's kind of a rubble stone foundation now, which is somewhat precarious. Second, it improves the site distance of the driveway to and from the site. The, actually, an existing driveway that's being used and being enhanced. So, the, what is shown on here is in fact a new location, as is proposed to be relocated on the site. I can see there's ample plantings, vegetation being proposed, and we'll be, of course, identifying those as part of the hearing process and looking for input as to that. On the northeast side, of course, we have to have emergency access to the sides of the property. I think the code requires access to two sides. Here, there's really access to three plus sides as well. But you see a hash mark area on the right-hand side. That, those are pervious pavers, so there can be vegetation within those. On the right-hand side, of course, it'd be, on this should show some fencing and vegetation being proposed. The, cutting around down the other way, I'd like to go down, if you looked into the bottom near the fire station. You can see the entranceway and opposing vegetation there, again, in a manner that does not obstruct the site distance of vehicles entering or exiting the site. And we've designed this with example parking. You may recall, the lower level of this building is parking, so all the residential parking substantially is under the building itself and not be seen publicly. There is a small parking field that's behind a historic home that will accommodate the use of the historic home and visitor parking for those visiting for the over fifty-five community. One item I did want to state specifically is you come in the driveway and look down to the south to the right, you'll see there are four parking spaces. The lines aren't there, but that little cutout to the right as you come in is actually too close to the lot line. The zoning says it has to be twenty feet off the lot line. This brings it to probably within ten feet of the lot line. We're probably gonna have to have relief for that particular aspect of it. Our hope is that you find that to be an acceptable thing to do to, to help us when we go before the zoning board of appeals. No one's impacted by it, that's of course an important item on any zoning variance that's requested. It's right next to the fire station, and there's vegetation that's really equivalent to twenty feet that's off of that anyway. That's pretty much it. We wanted to just introduce ourselves again, 'cause it's been a while, and to indicate that filing is imminent. And if there's any questions you have of us now, or Bruce, we're more than happy to answer them, and hope to see you again in the formal nature in the near future.
Dave?
On the historic house you mentioned, you're not moving it into the same position. You're just gonna go northerly with it with the new foundation. What was, what was the position of it that we were looking at previously?
Sure, it was probably ten feet farther south, and probably above seven or eight feet farther east. Is that a fair categorization?
I, I think I was confused by your north, so I, I think that this, this is north and then...
The legend, yeah, legend's up there, yeah.
I always thought...
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it was, it was a little bit further away from the road.
Do you have any reason why? 'Cause I, I like that idea, 'cause it seemed to have better sighting, moving it away a little bit. I know, and I can recite what was historically the distance and things like that, but I think around that corner, that the home, the home right now is so close to the sidewalk, maybe five, six feet away, and just anything more than, than what is there now is great, but I'd like to see what, what would be the impacts of going back to what you originally proposed.
We'll take a look at that.
And I'm just one person speaking on the board, so I'm...
No, I, I, making that corner with good sight vision.
Well, we have, the site distance is, is fine the way we have it, but we'll, we'll look into it. We, we wanted to, just as far as fitting the septic and, and the parking and...
I get it, you know, I definitely get...
So we have all, all these things sort of getting, getting meshed together.
Right, they start to intersect and converge.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take another look at it, but it's a combination of all those things. Fitting the, fitting the parking and, and we, we didn't want, we didn't want to add any exterior parking in the buffer zone to minimize the impervious in the buffer zone, so what our earlier version had some parking down there. So that also was pushing the, the extra parking that we pulled up front to minimize the impervious in the, in the buffer zone, pushed the home up. But we'll, we'll take a closer look at that.
And just a question too, is the, this is unrelated, but to the home, is the, is the front bump out there with the bay windows and the pediment, the kind of arch pediment, is that historic to the house in any way? It seems like, you know, you could also achieve what you're looking for if the historical...
That's the district's, that's, yeah, don't even look at me. That's the district's, say...
But if you just look at it though, Hayden, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's part of what...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, well, this may not be, but I think, I think the wings are.
Maybe.
It's worth, it's worth the conversation, 'cause if you're gonna build new foundations, you're like...
If there's, if there's a foundation, you can tell by if there's a foundation under those, under those wings.
'Cause that'll get your four feet.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's a nice building, and they've saved it and utilized it for, as long as I've been in town, thirty-some years.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not advocating doing any harm to it.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I understand.
It's just an opportunity, 'cause it's gonna be jacked two feet off the, off the ground right now, and...
Yep.
If anything's not supposed to be on it historically, it's, now would be the time.
Right. You have any questions?
Just curious the proposed occupancy and the number of spots below the building?
I'm sorry?
The proposed occupancy for the building and the number of...
It's gonna remain as it is, it's been used for office...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the, the new, the new property.
Oh, it's an over fifty-five senior housing.
Do you like a head count or bedroom count?
Uh, they, they...
Zero units.
Fifty units, and how many parking spots?
Cannot be more than two bedrooms per unit.
Okay.
And there's a certain affordable requirement applied by the law.
Okay, and how many parking spots below?
Uh, there's one point seven five parking spots per, per unit.
Okay.
So whatever the math is...
Eighty-five-ish.
Yeah, eighty-five, something like that, yeah. Just shy of the two per, but not everybody has two cars, but some people do have two cars.
Right, right, right.
The younger, the younger set have the two cars, and that's exactly, that's, that's a good thing to, to take into account. You know, having that extra little space for, you know. So, I have one on, on that four parking spaces here, that is close to the lot line. Is that a wall that goes around there?
There's a retaining wall along that area.
So that side is lower right, to begin with, correct? Okay, that's what I thought.
Makes sense.
We'll show you the detail.
Okay, how, how much lower is it, do you know, just off the top of your head?
I know it drops off, I don't recall, maybe two feet, isn't it three feet?
Which wall?
The drop-off, right down to this area, the natural drop-off.
Yeah, the, the existing, the existing wall...
Yeah, it doesn't geography show, but the answer is two or three feet.
I, I forget, I, I've got...
Probably greater right at that, that, you know, southeast corner.
Right, at the top, at the top, yeah.
Then it'll go down along with the...
Then it's down with the grade.
Right, the police station and that same ramp.
All right, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, why, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that, you know? Doesn't look like, to me, that it's, it's gonna be real detriment to the area to have that little tighter there. You already got a retaining wall right on the edge of the property to maintain the property next door. So you're not even gonna see those, most likely you won't even see those cars.
You're correct. Yeah, and there's been historic cooperation back and forth between the, the original owners of this property and, and the town.
Yes.
Right, see, this little bump out here, like I know it myself, was actually once part of the site.
Oh, yeah. It was, right, yeah, yeah, I remember, that was, that was the, the police station building, we did that one.
During the permitting, when they, when they were doing the permitting, they, they worked out a deal to help make, to fit in some extra parking there. So there's a...
I was on that building committee.
Those early meetings were crazy. They drew quite a crowd.
Yeah.
I, I know this will come up when we get the, the final plans, but I'm just curious what the flood zone is closest to this. What, what kind of grade change are we looking at?
That drop-off, naturally, right on a significant drop-off.
About twelve feet. Okay, and is the existing grade for like this back half of the property staying at grade, are you filling?
Oh, no, no, from, from, from the, the existing grade down to the wetland, it's about a twelve-foot drop-off.
Okay, and the proposed finished elevation is gonna stay at the current existing grade?
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, there's already building back there, right, that's, is that...
That's a disturbed area.
Yeah, it's all, this is, we don't, so, uh, we, we don't have the overlay of the existing building and the parking, but it's all, yeah, this is right on top of the, the existing building and parking, and it's the same grade.
And if you go back two hundred years, it's even, it's, it's disturbed in there also, that was a...
Yeah, I was less concerned...
A wheelwright in a wagon, in a wagon...
Wagon factory.
Factory.
Yeah, I was just less concerned about disturbance, and curious about what the grade was.
Yeah, right, you know, it's, it's, there's a huge, there's a huge difference.
Sounds like you've got a natural pad right there already.
It's, it's the same, same elevation in the rear.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I like the project.
Yeah, I do too.
Looking forward to seeing, I'm, I'm seeing the renderings, I thought they were fantastic.
Yeah, they were.
They keep what the character looks like.
Danielle, you got anything from your end?
No, no.
Okay.
We'll shortly share with you, and you'll...
Well, yeah, she's gonna, she sees it before we do.
Well, thanks very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, so we should be filing shortly.
All right, great. I was actually wondering, and Jayden was asking, my wife was asking, so when's that project gonna start?
It's been too long, but it was, it was a lot of work.
If you, it takes time to do the prep work.
Right.
It could take as much time to do the prep work as, as the construction. Do it right the first time, you know how we are about that.
Right, absolutely. All right, well, thanks for what we're gonna say, really appreciate it.
Yep, no problem, thank you. What was that?
I don't wanna see this, let them know.
All right, see ya.
Take care, thank you. All right, what are we doing, Danielle?
Um, do you wanna take care of the bond releases first, or the reductions eventually?
Yeah, why don't we? You wanna start with Eaton Circle? That's probably the hardest one we have.
A new tri-party agreement for you to...
Right.
Got a motion.
You got a, you got a passage of motion over there. Uh, we have to, we can discuss it during, at the motion.
All right, Mr. Hayden, I move that the Community Plan Commission vote to accept the August eleventh, twenty twenty-two report from P E M Two Associates, Inc., and that the amount of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and thirteen cents be established as sufficient to ensure the completion of the Eaton Circle subdivision, previous bond amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second, Ed?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Dave? I read over, it was fine.
Still retains the ten percent.
Yeah, it's got the ten percent in there and all that, yeah. No, I, I trust it, it looks good. And they using today's, they using today's numbers, which means asphalt is more expensive today.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three in favor, and Warren, and...
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, absolutely, sorry. All right, so we have to vote on the tri-party also?
No.
No?
No. Just sign it.
Just sign it?
Yeah.
Sure.
You wanna, yeah, watch, Debbie will get them around, you can go do the next...
There's three, there, yeah, there's two.
Three signature pages.
Thank you.
And then I'll let you date them right then.
Uh, yeah, that's fine, you can probably date them, please date.
The printer, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Hura.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Plan Commission vote to accept the August eleventh, twenty twenty-two report from P E M Two Associates, Inc., that the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and eighteen cents be established as sufficient to ensure the completion of the Shay Lake subdivision, previous bond amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Second, Ed?
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Danielle, how's Shay Lake going, Shay Lane going?
Good, um, fine.
Did they fix that last lot?
So the latest on that is just that the problems that are remaining are really specific to the development of that lot, and so what the engineer, the project engineer, sorry, the, the engineer for the development of that site and DCI and I have talked about is that DCI will review some additional improvements and changes, such as increases in the infiltration and like the capacity of the infiltrators and everything, and the connection of the roof drainage, but that, that's not going to be paid for out of the subdivision like inspection fund, that has to be something separate. So I'm working right now with DCI and with the project engineer to get a quote for what that will cost, because that will be the homeowner's cost, because the way that site is being developed is just what's at issue here and not the subdivision.
Changed everything on that site from what we reviewed, right?
Um, it, it, it is, it's, it's different in some ways, and, and it can be different in some ways, because there's only so much control we have over the development of, you know, a single family house lot, once it's released. But because there are these additional, you know, drainage issues, they've agreed to work with DCI and...
Thank goodness.
So we're working this out, because, and not everyone is a hundred percent agreement about what really does need to be done and what needs to be reviewed and what needs to be paid for, but one thing that I have made clear is we can't charge this to the subdivision developer any longer, because it's not, it's, it's not his...
It's not his cost, he did it.
No longer his cost, so...
He did it right the first time, and then he went and changed it, and that's a, that's an issue. And then that, then impacted the neighbors.
Right, right.
And secondly, this bond has nothing to do with that, really for the town, you know, portions, if you will, you know, by the developer, so...
You notice, there's, there's nothing in there about, if you look at the bond, there's nothing in there about retention ponds, right?
No.
Well, not anymore, well, because, because they were constructed to, according to the plan, and they function properly, then...
There were never bonded, because you have to have that before you, you get...
Right, right, you can't even have a...
Before you can bond.
Right.
It has to be done, because you have to have a roadway.
And the drainage and that, you know.
Okay.
So, I, I understand that's not the issue, but what is the hook for them to do that with? Do they have any leverage on that, at this point?
No, we really don't, I think if things...
If you're solving your faith, like they'll make the, the fire prepared?
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it is the kind of issue now where, with, as with any, between two, you know, between a new developer and, or a new single-family homeowner and an existing abuser, it would be a private matter if one was doing something to the other's lot and causing excess drainage, because once it's through the subdivision process and the review process, then what happens after that point is beyond our control, just as if, you know, you did something to your neighbor, you, you regraded and it caused drainage to go into your neighbor's lot, it's...
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's a civil matter at this point.
It is.
And we're just trying to make it right. Yeah, exactly, exactly, 'cause we're really, we did our due diligence, we, we did everything. When you go back, they go back and look at it, the, there was a plan for all the drainage in there, and the plan was all looked at, and then they changed something on the drainage, be it where the house is located, or where the pond is lo, or what, anything that happened there. If that happened after, you know, we had certified it was okay, it's somebody else's, it's, it's a civil matter now, it's no longer.
And it's all stabilized, right, now it's just a stormwater runoff issue?
Yeah, um, it, it is, I mean, they're...
Before it was like still going until it got full and stuff, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, that was, that was the, the original storms before everything was built.
Yeah.
Yeah, before the site was...
The first round, the first round of, of issues.
And now it's just flooding.
Right, and then they built, they built the, then they built the retention pond, if I recall this correctly. Warren was, was a little more on top of this, 'cause he was out there. They built, after that first round, then they went and built that retention pond to spec. And it never happened again until this guy came in and built his house. And disturbed and modified something out there on that lot, and it, the retention pond's on his lot, but...
But the pond itself is fine.
Yeah, the pond itself is fine, and all the other stuff that he did is, is what's causing the situation. The water, the water is no longer draining to the pond, it's draining this way, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
All right, so...
The motion was...
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Three in favor, and Mr. Pierce and Jeremiah are... What do you got there, Ryan, you got another one, or is that it? That's Shay Lane, you got, uh, Grand Legacy, the, oh, I was gonna go by and look at that.
So he hasn't built the wall that he was looking to do?
He started.
Okay.
Sorry to say that, but he's...
No, it's okay, it's fine.
Is this the house, I mean, the wall that they wanted us to approve, it's non-structural, it's decorative?
It's decorative.
It's an entry type one, right?
It is, and I don't think that we normally do go through a process of approving them, but he did ask, and so you all said that you would like to see what it was going to look like, this is what it looks like, except for the fact that in the photo that he provided, that actually shows earth being retained, and what he wants to do, he says does not. So that is a different type of wall, as long as he has building permits that he needs, I, I mean, if you wanna give any, yeah, looks good to you, okay, good.
To me, and, you know, these guys can speak to it, but I looked at it earlier, definitely.
I mean, I looked at it, it, it looks fine, as long as, you know, hopefully somebody knows how to build a wall, 'cause...
You hope, and then you just say as long as it does look like that.
Yeah, and it looks like that, it's...
With very minimal variance.
Yeah.
That's nice, you see them around town, and it's a nice way to, uh, address the...
You know how that bank goes up on the right side as you're going in, on the east side? That's where he's putting it, he's putting about halfway up, so it's gonna retain, it's gonna retain earth.
I just will make sure that he has whatever permits he needs.
Well, if it is, it's just going to Jerry, right? It's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna go to Jerry.
It's just in, in a big beefy type, I mean, it's aesthetic, but if the way that one is built, it would be able to hold back a lot, actually, it's not like a narrow wall.
As long as it's built this way, you know.
This is the one on sixty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, besides, I thought there was gonna be a house lot up there. I don't know how they're gonna get up there.
On the right?
On that right, yeah, 'cause it's a steep hill, they have an excavator up on top.
Yeah, mostly they get it right.
So, but I don't know how they're gonna get there if they're gonna put this wall down there. It doesn't...
It's possible.
Yeah.
But there's no rotating orb, you know, water mesh, or, like I've seen in some town nearby.
Nothing weird, so I think it's okay. It's, I think it's okay.
We'll just make sure that's all...
As long as he has proper permitting from the building inspector, 'cause he's tough on that, he wants to see those...
Dirt over four feet, right?
It depends, it can, in some cases, be less if it's retaining a certain amount of earth. So, I, but I'll just make sure he knows to...
I mean, if you look, you look back at that hill, if, if, if any dirt comes to the top of that wall, it retains the whole hill. Because that hill is ten feet above it.
Yeah, that's true.
I apologize, I didn't mean to go by there and take a picture before I got here tonight. But I left five minutes late, and I had to get the EDC meeting on time. I don't know why.
I don't know why you would think that.
Okay. Hey Danielle, can you tell us about the MBTA communities' housing regulations? How does it affect us?
So they have been released by DHCD, the final regulations. They don't really actually change anything for North Reading at all. There were some issues and some concerns that we had about how the town could possibly, you know, come into compliance with the regulations, and we were hoping that there would be some things done differently. And there were a lot of changes made, but a lot of those changes really apply to other communities and not to us, because there were a lot of, you know, there were, it was some easing of regulations around, you know, bus communities and commuter rail communities, and for those communities that have an MBTA station, how much of their land area around the station had to be devoted to the district. They've loosened up that a lot, which makes a ton of sense, and I'm glad that they did that, because for all those communities, it was gonna be really hard for them to meet. But none of the things that we were kind of grappling with are, are really any different. It's still, in order to achieve compliance, North Reading would still be looking at finding a district of fifty acres or more, could be anywhere, could be divided to some degree.
It could be anywhere, though, is the one thing they did open, right?
Yes, that's true.
Versus having proximity. Are we, Danielle, of the new, or not, they got rid of the, the bus one, but out of the four, so we're small, adjacent small town? That's us.
We're adjacent community, but we don't count as a small town, 'cause the small towns are really exempted for a lot.
So it's that third one adjacent?
Yeah, it's adjacent, right. So they did create this other category, but we're just not small enough in population.
Yeah, that's what, fifteen, fifteen people in a one...
What's that, seven thousand, I think, is the...
Well, it's seven thousand for...
Oh, per acre or something, I, I know.
But then it was population density, like about half of our population density, so...
Yeah, it's ridiculously small.
It wasn't going to be...
It's like, it's a, it's a farming community, is what they're talking about.
Yeah, so I think what we...
We don't come any of those.
Used to be.
Well, one thing I was happy to see is that they said they're going to release a tool that will really help communities to figure out whether they're compliant in each of these measures, and I think that's gonna be really necessary, because it's, it's otherwise, it's fairly complicated to figure out whether communities comply. So that tool is supposed to be released in the fall, and in the meantime, I know they've said that there will be some technical assistance available. I'll, you know, apply for whatever is available, so that we can have some help and some guidance with this, because it's going to be a big job for your help.
It's not gonna be easy.
No, and we'll also...
And they want, the, the select board wants to comply, am I correct?
I would think so, I mean, we should try.
I mean, if we don't, we're gonna lose all kind of grant, often, you know?
Yeah, it's too much, too much at stake.
We have to at least try.
We have to at least try, and I don't think it's as, I think for some communities, it's gonna be extremely hard to comply. It may be for us too, but I think that it's, we have more in place than, than a lot of towns do. So I, I think we can do it, it's, you know. So we, we probably should have some upcoming discussions. I don't know if I should just put it on every agenda as a discussion, just so that we can just continue to talk about it a little bit each meeting.
I think you should.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll do that.
It's kinda like your, your briefing.
Yeah.
You know, put, just put it in there, not, not in your briefing, but, you know, as a line item, so everybody can see it, and we can talk about it.
So is that on the three documents that you have, the actual rules? So is that on the three documents that you have, the actual rules, the guidelines, and then you have the planner's memo that, um, that your, you know, that kind of bullets it, and then there's the kind of town official memo, is that the one that select boards has, and are you gonna do that same? Remember you did the presentation to brief everyone on what's coming? Since now that we kind of know what has come, are you gonna do that?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Um, and I think at the same time, because we've, because we had that presentation already and we started to talk about it, there's almost nothing that's different for us. So there's almost nothing new to say, except that, yes, this has actually happened and we're actually doing it, so I think we can kind of start to move on it. I mean, we could, but I think the message would be, it's the same.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think if nothing else, you gotta tell them that they went off, they reviewed everything, and our nothing has changed for our size town. Don't say North Reading, because it wasn't specific to us. It was it was our size town, you know, an adjacent town of our of our size.
Right, of course.
Without station.
There's there's no changes in the regulations and guidelines for us, so we have to work to the original guidelines, period.
Um, well, the the guidelines as they've been revised, and they are a little bit clearer. I mean, there were some questions that were, you know, out there before.
They're clearer, but, yeah.
I I did wanna mention, there is a September eighth online information session that's going to be held, which, um, I can send out the information for that. I'll I'll be registering for it, um, so.
Is that a date time thing?
Um, I believe it is, I'll I'll send that, I'll send it out to everyone, so if you'd like to register.
Can anyone go onto that?
As far as I know, yeah, I I think so. I think it's just a public.
As long as you register.
Yeah, it's it's a Thursday, I know it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
It's a Thursday.
It'll be in the morning.
I had, I had the email about it. Oh, here we go, um. It's one P M. And I think anyone could register for it.
Do you know, too, Danielle, with, um, you know, one of the bullets, I think it's the fifth bullet I'm reading, just on the density of multifamily, and they're using it, um, they have that tool that you mentioned that will be based off G I S for the town, but, you know, do they factor in that some towns have sewer and some towns have septic, and there's just the density problem for us or any town with septic is that we have septic, and it's like we have.
Right.
They didn't take a little.
We have a little pet on a leash called septic system that needs to come with all these homes, and it's hard to have the same density.
I don't think they took that into consideration. I think that they did also, they did say, by the way, wherever you, uh, claim you're gonna have your district, you should be considering all of the factors about whether this is really developable, so of course, you kind of have to think about um, septic, but there are no special provisions for it, so.
Right.
That's an issue right there, and that's something that they really blew up looking at these guidelines.
And do we have any? And do we have any large parcel, um, again, since we don't have to have the proximity, or we kind of wave off the proximity thing, just any available lot? Do we have anything along the sewer sewer pathway that, other than maybe commercial, but, uh, even that, I don't know, but.
I mean, yeah, we, I think we, I think we do, depending on what the final sewer pathway is. I mean, the town does own land along, um, Lowell Road.
Right.
Um, the town doesn't own much land on Main Street, but there are places that, I mean, the town doesn't have to own land, I shouldn't say that, um, but there are places on on Main Street that could be changed to this.
Most of what there is in town anymore is undevelopable town land, undevelopable, because it's wet.
Right.
Concord Street would have been nice.
And, yeah, then that's our, that's our only area.
But you can't, I mean, if we wanted to, we are going to have to rezone somewhat somewhere in order to comply with this. So maybe there is a small portion of Concord Street where that makes sense.
Yeah.
Maybe, um, there's a portion of Main Street that makes sense, maybe there's a portion of North Street or Lowell Road that makes sense, I mean.
About the contaminated building that they just released.
I mean.
It's actually quite clean, as we learned.
It's gotten a lot better and.
It's underneath, the building's not really contaminated, it's it's.
The building's not very nice. The building's, the building's gone.
Yeah, that's that's, that's, he's a wrecking ball.
Yeah.
But the pumps aren't pulling up right now, the ones that they have there, because some of them got disconnected, but they're not, I I was out there, they said they're not pulling up readings that are in past the threshold right now, so it's just that.
It's gonna stop them downstream.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta have a, an activity use limitation in A O U, but it's still, which should probably not be housing.
Probably not.
Um, but it's not that bad, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's that's good for an eight hour a day kind of thing, huh?
It's a good business site, everybody's safe on it.
Sixty dollars.
I I think what it's really gonna come to for for us is we will have to find a couple of sites that we will want to consider to allow multifamily housing where we have not zoned for that previously, and we will need to revisit our requirements for special permitting for site plan review, at least for some zoning districts, because any requirement of a special permit will not count for this at all. So those are the big things that we'll have to look at. I think those are the biggest changes for us.
Alright, well, maybe you need to go through and give us a, you know, a list, and what do you think, where and how, and
Yep.
That's gonna be the biggest thing.
Yep.
I did, there's just not a lot of open land here.
No, but you know, there there doesn't really have to be, because they're looking at changing zoning, they're not really looking at how many will.
Basically, what they're doing is they're saying, this is a, this is a card, a show game. You're gonna tell us what you can do, but you know nothing's gonna happen for fifty years, because that's whoever owns it or whatever, it's, you know, it won't change unless it changes hands.
Yeah. Well, you can rezone the property and, you know, as as we know, if all of a sudden you can do multifamily housing by right, a person who was sitting on a property before.
Yeah, they might, they might.
Yeah.
Build on it.
Yeah, might encourage them.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the better way to do it, to be frank, though, than what I'm involved with on a lot of my, you know, in my business with developers up up in Maine or whatever, wherever we're building residential, is the amount of, you know, Portland, for instance, has twenty-five percent now is affordable or I Z, so a private owner or developer has to pay for, for the benefit of the government, if you will, you know, affordable, provide affordable housings at a complete loss to the whole development. So that's one quarter, you know, one quarter of all, everything you develop has to be a loss, and it's a lot to put on a private developer versus, this is the better way to do it, is create the zoning that allows you to do it multifamily, whatever, and that's, it's the market then, the market comes in, I can build this, I can do that. That's a better way to do it than more at at gunpoint.
You're, well, you're right, but the the problem is, we, well, the problem for us is, is we have to make sure that zoning is not available for them to put in multimillion dollar condos.
So there's no affordability provision at all in this, so.
See, that's the issue, that's, they just blew that right out of the water, didn't they?
So here's what we are.
Yeah, that's interesting, man, because you just raised, you just raised a good point. I'm going down the angle like this is good for affordability, but you're right.
What the state did, it was right out of the water. This is supposed to be affordable, it's supposed to be affordable. There're gonna be five and six and seven hundred thousand dollar condos.
I mean.
So there, this is more of a density approach, more than an affordability, okay. Then I, you know, then, yeah, then that's not, it's not helping, really, but.
Yeah.
It's not gonna help. What they wanna attack is not gonna help.
Or it might not, it might not help, because we don't know, but it doesn't.
One thing we'll really need to be looking at is, um, if we want to provide some kind of inclusionary zoning aspect to this, where for new multifamily development, you are required to do a certain percentage of affordable, because then otherwise, we may, we may fall very behind in our ten percent. At the same time, if we put in something that's too onerous, they'll, the state won't accept it, because then that's seen as discouraging a developer from building housing. So there's gonna be a balance.
That's a problem to state. They've always done this. They've always done this. The only reason people started doing forty Bs is because land wasn't available anymore, so they started doing it on land that was worthless. They couldn't put in a house that you could do.
Yeah, with the proper dimensions and all, yeah.
Yeah, with the dimensions and stuff, so now they've stuffed it in, the zoning is out the window, you're gonna go with their zoning ten feet up the lot line, da 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 da. That was the wrong, that was just the wrong way to do it in the sixties and seventies when they did it, when there was still landmass available. They needed to do something, I mean, you know, Maine is, they're saying a quarter of what you build has to be affordable.
Portland, I should say, there you have the most.
A quarter of what they build has to be affordable, right? So now they got a huge amount of affordable apartments or whatever, and they don't have people fill them.
Yeah.
That's an interesting problem to have, because at that point, you can go higher into the, into the salary pool and say, yes, you can now live there.
And that's what they're gonna have to do, because that is the problem, is they're having a real difficult time finding people that can afford in that market, homes that are seven hundred, six hundred thousand, and that's a controlled cost there, you know, that's, it's a lot, like, nobody can make that, so.
To qualify and to be able to pay for it, it's tricky.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, there's so much dynamics there that.
My daughter just bought a condo.
Oh.
Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, well, that's, then there's another fifteen that's going into it to make it livable, really. Um, so, you know, and and that's right at the top of her, and it's because of the bank of mom and dad.
But is she paying P M I?
She's with the bank of mom and dad.
Okay, well, either way, because that's.
She's paying, she's paying interest. She's paying, you know, she's paying this, but this is not free.
Are the F T I's insured?
Uh, no.
He's like Harry Potter, he's Gringotts, you know.
The money's out, the money's out, the money's out of our account. She owns, well, she owns it, we own it, one of the two owning, so.
But the P M I is another example of it with the four, but like, so they, you're, they're squeaking by, then you're, then they have to pay P M I.
P M I, insurance, this, that.
There's also no backside, they can't then, three years with this great market, three years down the road, sell it for profit. It's fixed.
It's a, it's a fixed profit, right?
Give it a certain year, but yeah, so there's no upside to get out of the hole that they could be in financially that would help you climb, you know, so there's so many weird dynamics.
It is.
Even if you challenge your refinance, if you've gained equity.
Yeah, I just.
Because you're limited in the equity you can actually keep, and I mean, because you've got a very subsidized unit, so then it's like.
I do, I see both sides of it, it's just like.
There should be, there should have been something put in to be able to, I don't know, you know, allow it to happen, you know, get it.
Rising tide of ships.
Yeah, because it doesn't incentivize you to improve the home like everyone else does.
There are people, there are people who go in there and they are, they they qualify, and five years later, they don't qualify anymore. They haven't qualified for that. And they don't qualify, they're up here now, because their jobs have changed, their status has changed.
Well, I mean, that is one of the goals of affordable housing, right, is to be an asset building tool for, you know, people who.
You don't want to go the other way, that they can't afford to be.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, it it, what I'm thinking of is, the people that are now up here, is they're in this affordable apartment, they're putting all their money away.
Yeah.
Right? And the people that need to be in that apartment can't get in there, because these people are still there. They don't continue to look at that. Why are you making so much money now? Like, I'm married, and my husband makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but I don't.
They're disincentivized to move, because they don't cash out the equity they created.
That's right.
Yeah, so it should be like a review.
And that's everybody, that way. Well, that's, we can, we're not gonna solve that problem.
No.
That's, that's what we need, we need, we need to figure out what we can do, and, you know, if we can write something so that we've not basically can accomplish to make our our system worse here.
Right, so, okay, why don't I kind of sketch out a plan for, you know, what we think we need to find out, what our various steps might possibly be, what things we should start looking at, and we can just start having this as a discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Future meetings, so, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
What's this, uh, Z B A we got here?
I don't think we have any Z, oh, do we have any?
We got one.
We do.
It's a very oddball one, yeah. I wish, I wish I had my civil engineer with me.
It's really concerning.
So. I, my comment on this one.
I thought I got more than you.
You wanna look it?
Oh, yeah. My comment on this one is, I would just wanna know, um, whether they were actually building any of the addition in the flood zone? Because if they are.
How can it not be, though? It's ten feet from the water.
Then they, they're gonna need a, not only.
I think it's even less than ten feet, right? Sorry to cut you off.
No, it's okay. I mean, I think that there, it looks like it would be in the flood zone, but it, the plan doesn't show where the flood zone line is, so I think, um, they would need, not only would they need their conservation commission filing, but they would need a floodplain special permit from the C B C as well.
Right.
So that would be my biggest comment about this.
Yeah, I'm sure, because they deal with Z B A, that is, they deal with homes all around the pond, so they've seen this before and know what they can do, and, but that was, that was the same thing I had, it's so close, it's so close to the water. It depends, I guess, if this is on stilts and it's ten feet in the air, I guess, maybe it doesn't, it's not, yeah, so, and I saw it on the, I saw it on Google, too, it doesn't look like that either, but, um, yeah, in just, in just this plan view, it's strange.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know, I don't know how you grant that, like.
Twenty-six feet long now?
Well, if they did, if that's what, that is what they're doing, they would have to meet the requirements for the floodplain special permit, which might mean that they actually couldn't do that, because you wouldn't be able to issue them the floodplain special permit if they're actually taking up more area that should be flood storage. So I think I can put that into a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm confident they'll, I'll hopefully be at the next meeting.
It's, it's. It's kinda, obviously, the septic system is between the driveway and their house.
Yeah.
They probably, they probably bought this figure, no, we're gonna blow up this up and make it huge and good to go.
Yeah, it's hard, I mean.
I think that's, it's more important about, you know, the things that we have a leg to stand, and that's one of them.
I'm sorry, which is the one?
The, the floodplain.
Yeah, the floodplain, yeah, for sure, and I would comment too, they would need.
The sidelines, you know, I pushed on that. Who's, who's to the right of them, or to the?
There's residences on each side, yeah.
I always love it when they don't, you know, you don't see them.
You have much more room on the existing deck side.
That little, that little thing over there, that's, is that what they call it, a deck, that little?
Yeah.
Three by two, the stair, the stair landing.
They have big little wine glasses up there on the side.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, it's one of these, it's one of these things, first of all, is
The great houses.
How do you get into the original house now? Use that deck, you know, go with that same entrance, square it off, and then, you know, you've lost maybe a foot. Well, maybe not, because it's parallel, that that line's parallel to the.
Well, that's the thing, there's substantial room on that existing side to put a deck on the side of that, but obviously, the desire is to have it walk in the face of it.
Yeah, of course, you know, where else would you go?
Not like there's nowhere to put it, or it's already there, they have a freestanding deck on the ground right now.
Yeah. But it's, it's considered okay, because it's movable. It's right on the lot line, too, but it's probably movable. Like a shed. So, yeah, the floodplain is the biggest.
Okay.
I don't wanna lose out there, because it was, it was pretty high there this year. I worked with a woman that, she'd never seen the water so high.
I can imagine.
This spring, I mean, not now, it's low, but, you know, spring was wicked high. And all it matters is one time for damage.
Probably basement, you know, the problems with the deck would be, but.
They're smart, they don't put a basement in there, right?
Yeah, you put that thing on stilts.
Yeah, that's what I would be doing.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that's it for Z B A.
What's next? That's it for Z B A.
That's all for Z B A, whatever else is in here, and I think that's probably. Minutes, Ryan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes to July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing that, all is opposed, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three in favor and Warren and Jeremiah are, I'm sorry. Is that your toe, Debbie?
No, that's my back. I'll probably go see a doctor.
Go see a doctor.
Yeah, go see a doctor, chiropractor.
Doctor, then a chiropractor. They're gonna take X rays for a chiropractor, make sure they're weight bearing, not laying down on the table. It's amazing, they, they do it all the time. Taking X rays of the back, you always have to do it standing up.
Yeah.
They lay you down, and there's no, gravity doesn't work on your back anymore. They're laying down.
They do that at a vet, you know.
Um, I just.
I used to do those. Did you know that? Really? I worked in the vet when I was a kid.
You were protection, I hope, or?
Oh, yeah. I had two, I have two.
Radiation.
I have two perfectly healthy kids. Yes, ma'am. Does that hit?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're going to do the, uh. If you're going to do the, uh, appointments for the EDC, I have to go and change this form, so are you gonna do that tonight, or you're like?
We keep looking at Dave.
We're trying, we're trying to get Dave to do it.
I get too much.
I don't wanna, I, you know, I'm like up to here. I will hold off till the next meeting.
So I should take the name off this, too.
I didn't, that I didn't do, I didn't do that.
I served it up. Trust me, if I have time, I absolutely would, when we're tired, I'm gonna send this to everything.
Has an informational question. This way.
The, the board discussed, um, an article for our town meeting. About the lots that we disagreed on last town meeting. We would like to see that come up again, there are some ideas about having, doing ourselves. Looking at those lots and seeing what needs to be done ourselves, not leaving it to someone else. Just for some knowledge of the lot, so the board would like to have a meeting together and.
Between now and October town meeting?
And Leah, you mean, just do some investigation, like, do a survey?
Do our own.
Yeah, if there's wetlands flagging.
Because we own it.
Yeah, no, I see, you know, do a little engineering.
Somebody else do it, let's do it ourselves.
Oh, you mean, put up the buildings?
No, no, just, just the surveying.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The wetland flagging, right?
Yeah, just kind of existing conditions, understanding, you know, what is buildable, all that kinda stuff.
Right, so.
If we don't have it, Danielle, is it, is that kind of the same disposition of all of them, they don't, they're not all surveyed, they probably, maybe?
None of them were surveyed.
None of them were surveyed.
None of them were surveyed.
So I think that was kind of the.
We went through.
Divide that we had, because, you know, our board didn't know what, what we were dealing with, and, and. I think that's kind of where we're at right now, is why don't we, I, I believe that article is too a lot of money to be able to do that.
Yeah, I think from what I heard, because I was just listening to the discussion from that meeting, um, it sounds like they were talking about, um, submitting an article. That would allow some, you know, pay for having the wetlands delineation and surveys done, which is not gonna be a ton of money. And I think might be a really good way to actually kind of break the stalemate, just move the project forward, I, I think.
Just wanna come together on it and be on the same page, so maybe we don't even have to meet for that, you know, but we hope that maybe we co-sponsor that.
Absolutely. I'm done with that.
Sure.
And then maybe meet to go further, you know, what we wanna do.
I think you get to, I, I mean, we're trying to get affordable built homes here, but you also, like, you give a certainty by having wetlands known and delineated. Up to, up to date and survey, you really, so when someone's bidding on it, they really know what they're getting and what.
Right, and it wasn't, so we, we weren't really worried.
Right, but it was some speculation, though, right?
Last one, most of those properties, we were gonna basically do a transfer of land for them to build the property for us. And the first year, you're gonna make more money than we sell empty lots adjacent down at, at, at the lake. You know, what, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, stuff like that, pretty cheap. But you're gonna get that much in, in taxes the first year, you get a house on that, if we don't pay to put the house up. You made more money right there, you know, we, we're gonna make more money that way, but, um, and it gives somebody an affordable place to live, so. You know, I just, I just don't wanna.
Our board is all on board with that, you know, we want that, I think there were just too many questions about the lots that we had. You know, to, to be on the same page, so we'd like to be on the same page.
So, let me ask this, Leah, it's still Leah, right?
Oh, yeah.
She can flag, right? Can she flag?
She does, she, she has, she has a business, I don't think she can work in North Reading, though, because of her role here.
Oh, you know, maybe not, because she, because she, she goes through our already flagged land and says it's okay.
Right, she reviews kind of on behalf of the conservation mission.
What I was trying to do is do it for, see if we can get it done for free, or, you know.
A lot of money, no.
Pay, pay her.
Wetlands are not bad, as long as the lot's not enormous, but it's, it, that's my cheapest one, the survey to pick up those flags is where you pay more money. You know, doing the actual property line survey, then picking up the flags in the survey, that's gonna be more expensive. But that could still be done by our local companies that we have here, right?
Everything's on GPS, uh, are, are all on, uh, GIS here, right? They can go.
Yeah, but not, not to that level detail.
We go through, we go through the, the, the.
But I think you'll still need.
Computer coordinates, and they can pick it up.
They have to do the.
They still have to, yeah, to, in order for an LSP to stamp that, it has to.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, even that's not.
But they do, what you're referring to is when you are speculating on a site, you can go to GIS to pick up what were, like, say, the last report of wetlands.
Right.
And they're fairly accurate for, like, planning purposes, but not to, to the point of the, of the select board, not.
It might be, it might be good enough for the select board to do that, I don't, I don't know.
I'm not sure, I think, again, that gives the bitter, the insert in certainty of what they're exactly have, because the, I'm sure they'll, wherever they're. If we're, if we're kind of even going the next step, maybe civilize, we're just adding in the setbacks or something, so people see exactly what's buildable.
Yeah.
But we don't have to do that, after that.
So does that change the approach for the transfer of the land?
Not much.
For sale, or are we still taking the approach of.
Well, if someone came in and they wanted to put an affordable unit there, that's what they, this was for, they'd have to come to the select to the lease it.
Right.
The select was looking to be able to define like that, this is the buildable area, and therefore, it's gonna be one building.
It can only, it can only, you know, they're gonna, they wanna look at it, say, okay, we could put a septic system in one house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of, it's kind of like a cart before the horse, you know, we wanna know what we have.
And then you can build that into the RFP, if we have, you know, whatever the, the conditions are on the ground, and it's, it's really only appropriate to develop on this part of it.
Yeah, right, right, no, that's, that's, no, and, yeah, that's fine, you know, we would, we would support that. I don't know if we can get a meeting together to, to, to get there, because it's, it's tough enough to get meetings together today.
I don't think we need one, if that's what they're, they're doing, right?
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
I don't, no, I mean, I can write a memo saying that the CPC would support that effort.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
And then, um, you know.
You guys meet enough.
Yeah, and then also.
Have a meeting to have a meeting.
Right now, those parcels are under your purview.
Yeah.
We, we did the, we did the change ten years ago, or seven years, whenever it was, the planning board did the change, and, and the board at that time agreed with it. You guys want more information, and that's fine. So, uh, but it, it's, it's kind of, it's in your ballpark, it's in the select board's.
But we'd like to, we'd like to go on, to be on the same page and put this article forward together.
Right, no, that's fine, that's to get the money to do the, the survey, yeah, sure.
What if I wrote a memo just saying that the CPC would support the select board in, you know, uh, submitting the warrant article, or be co-sponsor, I don't know. What you prefer to do, be co-sponsor the article, um, and then, at that point, if it does pass and the money is appropriated, I mean. I'll coordinate whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, after the fact, we could always get together if we have to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'd like to see that include some mechanism to recoup that cost, even if it's incidental, I think it's still worthwhile, since it's typically. I argued it before, was this is a typically a developer cost, they have to survey, and then they have to work within the, the laws of conservation and our zoning laws to do it. So, I mean, that, that'd be my only comment, I'm not saying I wouldn't support it otherwise, but.
The issue is, is, is some of the people, well, the people we were looking at at that point, were, were totally. What do I say?
They, they work with engineers who, I think, give a lot of pro bono services.
Pro bono stuff, so they would have done.
Have to dominate.
They would have come and done all that work here with us.
Yeah, and I think.
They would have cost out of pocket.
Gotcha.
So adding costs to that property for the proper entity, I know you're saying, if it's a commercial entity.
Yeah.
Then definitely recoup the cost. But if it's, if it's somebody like.
Like Habitat.
Like Habitat.
Who would be getting it for free.
Everything they do is free.
Right.
Maybe that's the point of service.
They, you know, they, they don't, they, you know, it's not free to the homeowner, they have to pay, and they have to pay sweat equity. And their own house and other houses, I don't know if you guys all knew that or not.
Yeah, I don't. I didn't know that.
It, it's, it's amazing, these people, they, they, so they learn how to take care of their own home, because they're, they're working on that home. And then they go to the next house and help build that house, and help those people, it's, it's really a good domino effect. So, um, but, yeah, I don't want, you know, I'm trying not to cost them extra money if they can get it for free.
So that could probably be decided when somebody comes forward.
Right, the RFP can have, yeah, like, the RFP could include whatever terms they wanted.
If it's, if it's truly a, uh, yeah.
Yeah, but otherwise, that's only a personal cost.
Exactly, exactly, and, and we should know what the cost is per lot, that would be the only, the only thing, is to know what cost, what engineering costs were spent per lot.
Yes.
Because some lots are gonna be more money than others.
Right.
I did just wanna clarify, it sounded to me from, um, listening to the meeting, that the intent was to do, do a delineation and survey. For the four properties that were talked about.
Yes.
And not for the whole district, is that right, just those four properties, okay, because that would be kind of a different scale of project.
Yeah, the town.
Now, well, the whole.
All of them, but not all of them were looked at.
The ones in the district that we created.
The ones that you had brought.
Yeah, the four, because those are really.
That's exactly what she's asking.
Yeah, those are the ones that were the easiest, at least it's expensive to develop and most likely to be developed, the others, there are some others out there that are harder to develop.
No, we weren't looking at that, the whole thing, just the ones that you had.
All right, we can start with that, and then in the future, we can always do more, if we wanted to.
Well, if this works.
Yeah, this works.
And built in, you know, as an affordable house, that's great. It's a start, in the right, the right way.
Right.
So I have one. Anything else?
Um, and we are also kind of anxious to get that accessory dwelling.
ADU, well, we had something we were gonna read tonight, look at tonight, but with two members missing, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna push that off to our next meeting. I think, we weren't trying to get this done until.
Probably June, October, yeah.
Yes, June, June town, town meeting at the earliest, or next October, only because there's so much stuff going on. There's no time, it's too late now anyways, right, the warrant's closed for.
Yeah, uh, not yet, but soon, yeah. Too soon to get it.
As far, as far as she's concerned, the warrant's closed, because she's not, we're not, she's not gonna be telling the right of the else.
Danielle, weren't we gonna get, though, from our last meeting, which was July, like, a month ago, or so, um, Jerry back here?
So, I know that you wanted me to talk to Jerry about whether he had seen that last draft that we'd shared, and, and he and I met, and he has seen it, and, and we've spoken about it. I, if you'd like, I can invite him to the next meeting to have a discussion, yeah, sure.
Answer so many questions as we try to work through, you, what we.
And put it on for, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Put, put that out for the first, so Jerry can come and go.
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and if any, you know, so block out forty-five minutes or an hour, and if any public hearings come up between now and then, make it eight thirty or later.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
I, I, I hate to have our paid employees here.
I know, we feel the same way.
Or we, or we start at seven or something, you know, because of Jerry, like, just start earlier, that gives us a whole half an hour.
Oh, that, in our next meeting, that's a question, too, right?
Yes, I did wanna discuss that schedule with you.
Start discussing what's gonna be on the meeting.
So, election day is September sixth, which would have been our September meeting, um, so, Chris was suggesting.
For the state primary, primaries.
The thirtieth, August thirtieth?
Suggesting, because in the month of August, there are actually five Tuesdays. Two Tuesdays from now is the thirtieth.
I can do the three.
That works.
I mean, again, during the week, we have. Then we're, then we're gonna have, then we'll have a meeting in, uh, one meeting in September, and then.
And then our normal in October.
Then we'll have an October meeting, and then it'll be town meeting.
You can do that, Ryan?
And our October meeting, whatever.
Town meeting first.
Thursday?
Yeah, maybe traveling then.
Okay, oh, and the other part of that actually is, do you want me to post this as hybrid, because I.
I would post it as hybrid, just in case.
Just in case.
Just in case.
Okay.
Because you don't know if anyone's gonna get ill.
No, of course, and we'll definitely do that.
Be able to get here.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's definitely another piece of, like.
It's something that you have to deal.
It is, which is just fine, it's just.
I know you couldn't do it tonight because it wasn't posted that way.
Right, um, okay, and also, so if it makes it easier for people who are out or traveling or doing whatever, it, it, and we can at least do that for the next one.
Ryan, if you travel, you can jump on, even if it's for that half an hour or whatever with Jerry, you know.
At least listening, and, you know.
Simmons on, they have a hotel room in North Carolina, so if I have to jump out.
So you get North Carolina, I get South Carolina covered.
Oh, perfect.
Just where you wanna be. So, anything else?
That was it.
Okay, Danielle, do you have an update for us?
Um, I think you really were updated on everything that I would have updated you on when Mike came in earlier, but, um, oh, no, 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 that was the, the EDC meeting. I've been to too many meetings today, um, no, just, Mike came to the EDC meeting to give of just a brief wastewater update, um, we're still really working through. The information that we need to be able to discuss costs and how the assessments and betterments are going to work. And the expectations for economic development potential, the consultant is still working through a lot of that stuff. And so I know the select board was hoping to have been ready to have a workshop a couple of weeks ago, um, we're, we're, I'm sure they will be soon to, to do something like that. But it just, it, it's still, it still needs a little bit more time, so that we're talking about real numbers and the best information. Right, that August fifth workshop that was supposed to have happened, um, so it's just, it's just been, you know, it's progressing, it's just, there's a lot of information to, to get through. And.
Sounds like they get all their points drilled, so now the engineers just have to put together how it's gonna be done.
Oh, the design?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of questions about the design, so.
It's not easy.
But in terms of the financial aspect of it, I know that that's something that's very much, you know, of interest to us, and in terms of how it will affect development in the town. I mean, those are things we need to get a better understanding of, or at least what the options are going to be for how much development we want to allow. Because we think we have quite a bit of capacity, you know, quite a bit of potential, but we, we have to figure out, um, what that translates into. So, anyway, um, we'll have better information soon, the consultant will come back to the CPC, have a, have a discussion. I know we had a more general discussion when the consultants came in last time, so. Yeah, and in terms of any other updates, um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the word, starts with C.
Oh, Charles Street.
Danielle, do you know, um, what the status of the pet store that was gonna go into the plaza there and stop and shop? It seems like, I was expecting after all that.
It's something else now?
No, I don't, I, they didn't, I, they haven't started, I don't even know that they've.
I'm really interested to see, it's not, it's not like it's.
Let me find out, I was also wondering, it's, it hasn't.
I think a lot of the neighbors would be glad to not see the jolly green giant green sign here, though, it was pretty, pretty ugly.
Stretch Lab.
Sorry, sorry, that store, but.
Stretch Lab?
That does ring a bell, yes.
Is that permitted, like, in that plaza?
I can't remember which plaza it's in.
Stretch Lab, they, they do.
Just stretch.
I know I saw a sign for, like, a, a sign permit for it, but I don't remember which shopping center it's in.
Right, at the very end, I think, where Sears.
Oh, no, that's another.
No, that's, uh, Orange Theory.
I thought Stretch Lab was in the other.
But isn't it sad, I mean, how much could have still been there?
My, um, my wife thought it was gonna be where, oh, oh, Weight Watchers was.
Let me see, I thought.
Out of there, too.
It was in.
Kind of in the middle.
Where Skinsavvy is.
Unless, though, never any wine stores, it's gonna be a few more.
Yeah, you know.
Wine City.
It's gonna be total wine city. It's gonna be total wine city.
I know, right? No, it says two sixty-five Bean Street, so, yeah, that, that is the plaza. Um, I don't remember what's in it, though.
It was just a, a random thought and question. There's another big one, though, Elm Street.
Elm Street?
Twenty.
We're just waiting to hear from the Housing Appeals Committee, there's been no...
Did you, did you hear that the property, that, um...
It's a rumor, right?
Yeah, that Nick has sold that part of the property.
I heard a rumor, but I have no idea if it's true. I haven't been able to verify anything.